Okay, this is the Franklin Township Public Library Board of Trustees meeting. It's Wednesday, October 25th, 2023, and this meeting is being held via Zoom. I will now call the meeting to order, and we'll start with a pledge of allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Okay, reading the roll call. Agnes Kulabanya, not here at the moment. Amy Arcevala. Nicholas Champa, I'm here. Mayor Kramer, not here. NBC is here. Tiana Gresham, not here yet.
Iris is here.
Iris Cuthbert, here. And Kevin McNeil, here.
And number?
January Attic, our director, also here. This meeting is being held in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, also known as the Sunshine Law. The schedule and notification of this meeting have been provided to the Courier-News, the Home News Tribune, and the Franklin Township Clerk. Copies have been posted in the library's vestibule and are available at the reference desk. At this point, I'd like to ask if there is any members of the public who would like to speak at this meeting. Now is the time, and there will be a later time toward the end of the meeting. Any takers? Seeing none, I will close the first public portion of the meeting. Is there a motion to accept minutes of the meeting from September 27th?
I still move.
Okay, Iris, I want to tell you that NBC had his hand up first, so he likes the second.
I'll second.
Okay. NBC moved, and Iris seconded to accept the minutes as presented. Those in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry, is there any discussion of the minutes before we vote? No, those in favor?
Hi, and Amy just came in, so.
Amy.
Hi, good evening.
How are you?
Good, how was everybody?
You got here in time to vote on the first thing we had to vote on.
Agnes is here now. How you doing, Agnes?
Oh, Agnes is coming in. Hello, Agnes.
I think she's on.
She's not ready yet.
Hello.
There you go. How you doing, Agnes?
I'm all right.
Okay.
Okay, so that's... Let's move on, since we have accepted the minutes, to the directors' reports. January, have you any comments on the financial report?
Not really, other than to say that we should be at 24.99%, and we're at 24.11%.
Yeah, so you're right about on.
Yeah, right.
And some of the things have been paid, like maintenance automation, is that?
It's an annual, yeah.
That's an annual, so you're ahead on that, and you're behind on the workman's comp, and so it's gonna come fine. Any questions about the... Does anyone have a question about the financial report? Going on to the program reports.
Okay, well, as you all know, we had the grand opening on September 28th, and I think it was well attended. I think it went well. And I wanted to thank the branch manager and the head of adult services for making the slideshow. And as you know, we had local politicians, the state librarian, and many members of the library staff, and the Franklin reporter and advocate covered the event. Also, give you an update on our new ILS. There's been initial meetings, and the head of adult services, the technology librarian, and myself have attended meetings. There's now a preliminary schedule in place, and initial profiling has begun with an expected go-live date of May 2024. And now, also talk about the gallery roof, the principal participants in the project, they've met, they've discussed scheduling and various logistic issues. March is still the intended start date. Shortly, they will be coming in to measure the steel, and the preliminary plans call for getting the plans submitted to COOL by December 15th, and starting the delivery of materials by the beginning of March. And we had 45 adult programs with 467 people, and the children's department had 41 programs that 1,288 people came to. And I'd like to particularly talk about the October 5th event where we had the volunteer fire department come. This was a big hit, and the kids had a great time. I think the adults did too. And what I said in my report, and I just, I thought it was interesting, I didn't know this, that since children are often scared when they see firefighters coming in with their all their equipment and their gear, what he did was he deliberately dressed himself in front of the kids so that they would know, that they would see this is how it happens, and hopefully they don't be scared in the future, and they won't run away.
It's like pulling the curtains.
And that's it.
Good.
Thank you, January, but I have one question, because for some reason, I don't know what the FDC project is.
Oh, that, and technical services? That's Frederick Douglass collection. Let me just see what you're talking about.
Okay, okay, okay.
Yeah, the Frederick Douglass collection needs a lot of updating and reading and things like that, and that's what that's talking about.
Thank you very much, okay. President's report, there is none.
January, I have a question about the other library. How is the attendance going? Has it been catching on?
Lewis Street, is that what you mean?
Yeah.
Lewis Street is doing better.
Okay.
The new coordinator over there at the library has been working very hard to get people in for her storytimes, and she's actually getting people in, so we're encouraged. It's still slow, it's still slow, but it's doing better.
Good, as long as we move in the right direction. Okay.
Actually, at the new branch in Franklin Park, I visited yesterday, I believe it was, and they had been keeping a log, and the day prior, I saw that they had 65 visitors.
Wow.
And it was early in the day, and it seemed they were about on the same rate that day, so that's going very well.
Good.
Yeah, and to add, I know the principal of Franklin Park wants to be very much involved and get the students to come over. I guess there's a pathway and everything, so she's very excited about that collaboration.
Good.
We are too.
Yes, we are. Now, one thing I did learn from Amanda, who was the librarian, the head librarian there, is that they need some more signage, and I'm gonna be working on that with the Public Works Department from Route 27.
Yeah.
For instance, there is no sign for Clover Place, and there are no library signs. The street disappeared on my...
Even?
Seven and...
Even Clover?
No, the big one that goes across.
Clermont.
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 Clermont and Route 27, there is a light, and at that point, we should have
Sign.
Sign from each direction pointing into the library. That would be the most reasonable place for somebody to turn off.
Because it is easy to get to, but if you don't know where it's at, it's... It would be, it's not something where you're just gonna pass it, and if you're not going there, or if you're not going to the school. Well, yeah, that's something to work with.
I'll be working. I did some asking today who's in charge of that, and it's the Public Works Department, and I'll be... Okay, correspondence and communication. Okay, so... January, you sent us some nice color from CNN. Is this complete, or did this get cut off?
It seems like it got started kind of.
Probably.
I think it, I don't...
It seems that there's something missing.
On the top?
Yeah.
Yeah, top of each page.
Cut the bottom maybe.
Well, I'm sorry, I don't think I can ever fix that, because it was...
Different.
It was something that disappeared, like it was only on there. I don't think it's anything I can go back to, I'm sorry.
That's fine, there's plenty of...
I felt the same way.
Plenty of content there.
Yeah.
Sometimes when you try and print articles online from various sites, they don't come that well. This is the case of that, yeah.
Well, we thank you for that.
Yes. Especially the part, I read, it was particularly, particularly interesting to me, is the large percentage of the requests for these books to be banned coming from such a small amount of people. They said 66% of the book bans or the requests for book bans came from 11 people. And that's almost, and it's because normal people don't, I mean, like, I would never, you know, go and, you know, say, "I don't want books banned," or, you know, so the other side is not, you know, the silent majority, and I wouldn't even know where to go to say, you know, "I don't want..." And it was a good point that someone made, it said, "I mean, if you have a child in kindergarten in the third grade, I would think that the parents would be involved in picking out their books," you know, and... But anyway, it was interesting, and I guess it's good to stay aware of what's going on as far as this book ban, and it's getting ridiculous, or has gotten ridiculous. Thank you, January.
You're welcome.
Some of these books I had read when I was a student in Sierra Leone, in West Africa. So I don't know why they are banning books that kids... It's really, it's really sad, because it narrows their knowledge. If I had not read some of these books, I don't think I'm able to survive here when I came newly, because some of them teaches you a whole lot of things from a... And to a place like this.
And like Agnes said, I mean, you can learn from any, from anywhere. I mean, but it's to make the choice, and to call it freedom, and to take choices from other people is just... I don't, I don't understand. Anyway, it's just a shame.
I guess in my own days, that's what my own television was, really.
That was good. It should go, it should go back to that. It should go back to it. Now, everybody gets, I know people will get 100% of their news from TikTok.
Thank you, January, for highlighting these things to us. Thank you very much.
Yes.
You're welcome. There's being a lot printed, so it's pretty easy.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Is there any old business? Seeing none. Is there any new business other than the proposed holiday closing? Okay, so let's go on to the item on the agenda, proposed holiday closings for 2024. We have a list that has been put in our packet.
Blue list.
You didn't get a list?
We did.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
The blue sheet.
Yeah, blue, yeah.
The normal thing to do here would be for somebody to make a motion.
Okay.
To...
Iris, go. Iris. Good, I second it.
You'll make a motion to accept the proposed library closings for 2024? Is that the motion that you're making?
Yes, it is.
Well, the motion has been made by Kevin or NBC or Iris. And January, you have to decide who made that motion. Now, who's gonna second it? I'll second it for purposes of...
I thought that was NBC.
Yeah, I know, but he didn't see me.
Oh, I did.
Okay.
I know.
That's what counts.
I gave Iris a priority.
Okay, now, I'm gonna ask for discussion on this motion.
Go on, discuss.
Are there any difference from last year?
I...
Except that New Year's fell on Sunday last year, so I think that's the only difference.
I have some discussion to make. I just looked at this, you know, an hour before our meeting. Well, we designate holidays for various reasons, to honor common traditions and values, like New Year's, President's Day, Memorial, and Independence Day, Labor Day, Veterans Day, Thanksgiving. Also, we designate closing dates to give a break to our workforce. Another reason is to recognize ancient and longstanding religious observances, such as Christianity's Christmas and Easter seasons. And between Easter and Christmas, we have five closing days. I'm proposing that we declare Saturday, October 12th, 2024, as a closing date in honor of Yom Kippur. This seems like a good time in history to recognize this ancient holiday, even if it means trimming the list by one day. And this holiday could be all Christian holidays.
It's a Saturday.
And therefore, I'm gonna vote against this motion as it currently stands.
Well, we used to have, we used to be closed on the Jewish holidays. We used to...
We have enough Jewish holidays.
It was changed a while ago.
And, okay, I think it's, you know, since we have five days off for, anyway, that's my...
Don't count them.
My discussion.
Is that, so are you making a motion?
No, no, there is a motion on the floor. I'm saying I'm gonna vote against the motion.
We're gonna vote against the motion.
Yom Kippur's not in there.
Because of...
He wants, he wants on Saturday 12th, Yom Kippur.
And when would that, and when would that...
October 12th. It starts October 11th, but it starts at
Sundown.
Friday at sundown, October 11th, and continues through Saturday, October 12th, until nightfall.
January, what would that mean for the library?
An extra day off.
Well, this year it falls on a Saturday, so it's not really a problem.
But if it didn't fall on a Saturday, is this, this would be something that we would...
We'd have to take something, if you wanted to keep to the same number of days off that the staff gets for closings, if you put in Yom Kippur, you're gonna have to take something out, or give the staff another day off.
Well, in looking...
They would pay them.
And so...
Either is a possibility, however, there is a motion on the floor, and I'm just one opinion, so we can vote on this motion, and if it passes, fine. If it doesn't pass, then we'll have to think of some, we'll have to consider...
Okay, well, let me see. We have Martin Luther King, President's Day, Good Friday, Easter weekend, Easter Memorial Day weekend.
Labor Day.
Independence Day, Labor Day weekend, Labor Day weekend. So we have two days for Labor Day, three days for Memorial...
Three days for Memorial Day.
Three days.
Need one day for Labor Day.
I mean...
Veteran Day.
I don't, I don't, so from, excuse my ignorance, but Yom Kippur is...
Wish.
It's a, it's a big holiday in the Jewish religion, right?
Yes, correct.
That's a stupid question, I mean, but it's like...
It's the day of atonement. It's their largest, it's their most significant holiday of the year.
Okay, so then I will be voting
Against.
Against it, if, I mean, because I don't... If it's, if that's what it is, if it's their most significant holiday, if for the Jewish community, I think that it should be recognized.
Take off one of the Labor Day and give Yom Kippur.
I don't know if we should take off any day.
One Labor Day everywhere in the world. Why two?
Because we don't have, we don't have good attendance on those weekends. Why not, if I can make a suggestion? Just 2024, let's put it in, because it's on a Saturday, and then discuss it again next year when it falls during the weekend, it's gonna have a bigger impact on 2025.
It may not fall during the...
No, it's definitely.
It might always fall on a Saturday.
It might.
Is it a holiday on a special day, or like?
No, no, Yom Kippur would be, Yom Kippur is a day that it would find, that would fall on by the Jewish calendar. It's not, doesn't always fall on a Saturday.
Different day, yeah.
But it falls on a Saturday this year.
This year.
Okay.
Can I just ask a question too? Does this impact employees more, or the township? Because
Both.
It would impact, just like when you're making that decision, or we're making this decision too. If no one observes that holiday, that's an employee, would that impact that they want to work? Do they get paid? Is this like considered a paid holiday, or is this?
Not if it's on a Saturday.
Not if it's on a Saturday, but if it wasn't on a Saturday, it would...
Yeah, it would be, yeah.
And it wouldn't, it wouldn't impact, and this may also be a silly question, but I know, you know, certain employees have to work a certain amount of numbers of hours to be eligible for certain...
Oh, that wouldn't, it wouldn't affect that at all?
Just in consideration, yeah, just, we should keep that into consideration, how it affects the employees too and everything.
Right, so if it wouldn't affect the employees as far as, as far as that, if it would just be another, and not saying that just another day off, but if that would be the impact of it, I wouldn't see anything, but I wouldn't be, I wouldn't be against doing it this year, and then...
It's a Saturday this year, no problem.
Discussing it, but maybe, I don't know how I feel about that. I mean, if we're gonna, if we're gonna make it a holiday, maybe it should be a holiday every year.
What do other townships do with that?
Are schools closed?
Sorry.
Oh, it's just Saturdays, but yeah, so...
They usually do if it kind of falls on that week.
If it falls on, if our schools close on Yom Kippur?
It impacts like a Monday or a Friday, they do try to accommodate that, yeah.
And we then study the Jewish calendar for next year and see if we're gonna put it in where we should put it in.
I mean, I guess, I guess my feelings is, if it's gonna, if we're going to acknowledge it as a holiday, I just feel that it should be acknowledged as a holiday and given as an extra day off for the employees, and that's, if the only thing it's gonna affect is that they have another day off and that the library is...
Why can't we just go to one day for
Labor.
Labor Day.
Yeah, but like what I said before, was we have very bad attendance.
Right.
Nobody, do you really want to open the library and have all the staff here if there's only a few people coming in on a holiday weekend?
Well, you're gonna have very few people coming in on Yom Kippur if you're open.
Same thing.
We do have, I haven't seen that happen, actually. I mean, I haven't paid that close attention to it.
Right, we would, we would have to look and see what the, right, we don't know what the, if that's the case, but we do know that the case on Labor Day and Memorial Day, right? Is that what you're saying, January?
That's what I'm saying, yeah, we know that.
We do know that on those days, it's very, that, I don't see anybody going to the library on Labor Day or Memorial Day on that weekend. I don't know, so...
Yeah, like, how does that?
Iris, are you, are you opposed just to having an extra day? Is that what you're saying?
That's money.
We're talking...
Is that you, NBC, you would want to take one of the other holidays?
Well, I said, all over the world, Labor Day is one day. I traveled and lived in different continents. Labor Day is one day, not two, except here, they give two. Why?
Well, it's the...
First of May.
I don't know. Do they have, where else do they celebrate Labor Day?
May 1st, Labor Day in Europe, one day.
And it's on, and it's on the same day? It's on...
Yes, the first of May, any day, I don't care.
Okay.
It changes every year.
Okay.
It's Labor Day.
It's Labor Day, but not everybody gives the...
Even the Middle East, one day.
Well, we do have a suggestion from January that we might turn this motion down and then make a motion to include October
12th.
12th for this year, and then reconsider it next year, and some of the good days may line up differently next year anyway.
Yeah.
Good idea.
Okay.
That's what number one said.
Okay, so is somebody going to?
I think if we really followed Robert's Rules of Order, there are probably two ways to do this. One is for the person who made the motion to modify it. Another is to
Say, "Bully."
If we can vote this motion down, and then someone make a motion to include.
Mr. President, put it up.
Who made the motion?
President.
No, I didn't make the motion.
Who made the motion? Who made the motion to?
Nobody made the motion.
Yeah, the motion.
Nobody made any motion.
There was a motion.
I think there was, I think there was a motion to accept.
To approve.
Oh, that's right, yes, it was Kevin and NBC, yeah.
Okay, so I'm going to amend my motion, and I now motion that we accept the proposed library closings for 2024
Next year.
With the inclusion of October 12th for the observance of Yom Kippur.
Okay, now, I, here, I don't know what Robert's Rules requires, but I think it requires that the person who seconded it approve of this.
I approve.
Okay. So is there a motion, is there a vote to accept the motion as amended by?
Kevin.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Okay, one opposed, and one, two, three.
Wait, who was opposed?
Me.
Oh, Amy, okay.
The rest are, listen, Nick, NBC, Iris.
Yeah.
Kevin are all in favor.
And Agnes was okay?
Agnes? Oh, I'm sorry, Agnes?
Hold on. Yeah. I did.
Okay.
Did you hear me?
I did, I can hear you, but I didn't... I did, I can hear you, but I didn't see your hand. I don't see you.
Yeah, I have eye problems, so I'm in that glasses.
Okay, but you voted yes, is that correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay. This motion has passed. Is there any other new business? Seeing none, we go to the second portion of the public, the second public portion of the meeting. Is there anyone who would like to say anything at this time? Seeing none, I would, will close the second portion of the second public portion. Our next meeting date is November fifteenth.
Boom.
And twenty twenty three, and it will also be by Zoom.
What day is that? Is that the, is, is that the, is that, do we move it up from?
Yeah, we have, because of Thanksgiving. The real date would be the night before Thanksgiving.
I don't want to have it Thanksgiving? No, I'm joking.
You're going to cook for us, huh?
I'm not even cooking for myself.
I think I'll be absent that day. I have a program.
Okay.
Okay.
Enjoy your program, eh?
Thank you.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
I shall move.
Iris and NBC seconded. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.